Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, September 26, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Before we begin, I'd like to wish Lashana Tova to all of those who celebrate Rash Hashana. Next, we'll do approval of minutes from the previous meeting of August 22, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Any substantive corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Next item is additions to the agenda. I just have one. We have a Pride Week proclamation that we'll do under Item E during presentations and public input. Next item on the agenda is a closed session for collective bargaining issues pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren 2. Could I have a motion to go into closed session?
Moved to go on.
A move to go into closed session for collective bargaining issues pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren 2.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jayah. All those, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes. So for the public's information, we will be going upstairs to meet, and then we will come back down, come out of closed session, and continue with the meeting. Okay, I will ask for a motion to come out of closed session.
I move we close session and enter back into open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Isn't it yes?
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
All the hears were actually yeses.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Next, we'll move on to public input and presentations. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Please step up to the microphone. Okay, seeing none. We do have a proclamation. This is a proclamation by the mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois, and the county executive of Champaign County. Whereas, in 1969, an event referred to as the Stonewall Uprising began the national movement and the modern fight for LGBTQ+ rights, which has since spread throughout the world over the past 53 years. And whereas, in 1971, a group of LGBTQ+ University of Illinois students formed the organization, the Gay Liberation Front, now known as the Gender and Sexuality Resource Center. And whereas, since 1972, the cities of Urbana and Champaign have been at the forefront, both in the state of Illinois and nationwide, of protecting the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals by prohibiting the discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas, the cities of Champaign and Urbana and the county of Champaign have a rich and diverse history of LGBTQ+ representation in our government leaders, staff, and citizens. And whereas, the United Pride Up Center of Champaign County was founded in 2009 as an organization to advocate for the equality, wellness, advocacy, and visibility of the LGBTQ+ communities in Champaign County. And whereas, from September 24 through October 2, 2022, Champaign-Urbana's Annual Pride Week will host events throughout our community, offering opportunities to learn, engage, and show support for our friends and neighbors. And whereas, the centerpiece of this nine days of social and educational events is the community's participation in Pride Fest and Parade in downtown Urbana on Saturday, October 1. Now, therefore we, Deborah Frank Finan and Diane Wolfe Marlin, mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois, and Darlene Kleppel, Champaign County Executive, do hereby proclaim the week of September 24 through October 2, 2022, as LGBTQ+ Pride Week in the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois, and the county of Champaign, Illinois. And we will be proudly flying the pride flag in front of the city building through this coming weekend, and invite everyone to join us for the parade and fest on Saturday. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committee. Jayah Colacetti. Oh, we skipped council input. Oh, I constantly do that. I'm sorry.
Counsel input and communications.
Grace.
Thank you. Just had a few quick things wanted to just bring up again. Still in support of further conversations on the police budget resolution and hybrid meetings, and still looking forward to how we can partner with By Black Shambana in some kind of contractual agreement. And I don't know the details, but I hear that there's conversations, and I look forward to hearing more about the community safety review and Dr. Ellis' neighborhood sewer stuff. So just wanted to mention a few of those ideas to keep them on the record.
Any other comments, council members? Chandra.
Yes, Grace bringing up the community safety review. We have gotten a couple proposals submitted, and we're meeting as a team to review them. And so I'm very excited that that venture is moving forward, and I look forward to the moment we get to interview the companies that have submitted proposals and move this part forward.
Actually, I believe there's now four. Yeah.
Yeah, just to echo that, Chandra and I have the opportunity as the committee members who, or council members rather, who brought that proposal forward as part of the budget amendment last fiscal year to be part of reviewing those applications. And it's been very rewarding to get to work with city staff to make a determination in terms of how we're moving forward, and I look forward to sharing more with the rest of the council and the community, hopefully soon, certainly within the next few months is what I would anticipate as we move through that process of review and interviews.
James.
Yes, I wanted to mention that the Silver Hearts Community will be hosting a Halloween Bash on October 8 from 12 to 3 p.m. on Fletcher Street. They'll have games, they'll be giving out free costumes for kids for them to use on Halloween, they'll have some food, and they'll have food distribution as well. They'll have popcorn and cotton candy, but there will also be food for people to take home. Again, Saturday, October 8, 12 to 3 p.m. on Fletcher Street.
Sharice.
Since we're making announcements.
That's what this is for.
As well. Our homegrown celebrity, Mark Roberts, is having a reading of his book again on this Friday, coming this Friday, at the Cohen Building, and everyone is invited to come in and enjoy his rhymes and rhythms of, regarding just life situations. If you haven't read his book, The Lonely Banjo, I think you totally enjoy it. And he also has since started publication of a free kind of rhyming newspaper. His goal is to encourage literacy and to make children want to read. So he's got this little newspaper that he gives away. It's at the library if you get there in time, and also at Bohemia. So you can get a book either at the library, or I think Bohemia is selling them now, but the library I think is actually have them, and I don't know if they're giving them away or asking for a donation. I don't think they have a set price. I think they, but they are on display at the library. So just to say that Mark is a great guy, and he's trying to do everything he can to promote literacy and any profits that he makes from his book go toward a nonprofit. He's doing, he's trying to work with as many nonprofits as he can to, he's just basically giving away his money. So if, just if you're not doing anything Friday night, he'll be at the Cohen Building.
Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank the H3 Coalition. This is a coalition of 13 organizations addressing gun violence in our community. They posted a three-hour conference or discussion, and led a discussion about gun violence in our community. Alderman Wilken was there, and very informative, and I just am very thankful that they continue, these 13 organizations continue to push to end gun violence in our community.
And I would announce that the city is partnering with CU One-to-One mentoring, and we're hosting an informational signup opportunity right here in the city building on October 7 from 11 to 1. It's open to all city employees plus members of the public. So if you're interested in learning more about the mentoring program, and we particularly need mentors in the Urbana school system, so this is an opportunity to learn more, to sign up, to get information, and hopefully to join the effort. It's one hour a week throughout the school year, and people meet their mentees at the school, and it makes a tremendous difference in children's lives. So October 7, 11 to 1 p.m. right here in this room. Okay, we'll move on now to the Committee of the Whole report.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to move the following items as part of the consent agenda for approval. Ordinance number 2022-09-039, an ordinance annexing certain territories to the city of Urbana, 1414 West Anthony Drive, Champaign Asphalt Company, LLC. Resolution number 2022-09-072R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for public arts program operating support, fiscal year 2023 Urbana Arts and Culture Program. Resolution number 2022-09-074R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a DCEO grant, community development, violence prevention, and administrative costs. Just noting again, that's one that I recused myself from, though. Resolution number 2022-09-071R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning certified housing inspection, term of 2022 to 2023. Resolution number 2022-09-073R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a DCEO, generate energy savings program grant, Nevada Street Lighting Project. Those are all of the items from the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Jayah, seconded by Chandra. James.
I would request that the items that council members want to abstain from should be removed from the consent agenda, so that they don't have to abstain from the whole consent agenda.
Is that a motion? Do we need a motion?
Normally, there's an ask before the consent agenda is read, if there's any concern with anything on the consent agenda. So I'm sorry, I got that, I got to it after it was all read out.
So the request is to remove the items that involve the University of Illinois?
I think it would be C and D, since I recused myself from C.
Okay.
So if we could just submit those from the motion and take those up separately?
So I would modify my motion to approve those items, minus Item C, Resolution Number 2022-09-074R, resolution authorizing acceptance of a DCEO grant, community development, violence prevention, and administrative costs, and Item D, Resolution Number 2022-09-071R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning certified housing inspections, term 2022 to 2023. Put the other items for approval.
Does the secondor agree with that? Okay. Okay, the motion is on the floor for Items A, B, and E on the consent agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Then next, I would recommend Resolution Number 2022-09-074R, resolution authorizing acceptance of a DCEO grant, community development, violence prevention, and administrative costs, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, rather.
Is there a second?
James second.
Okay. Moved seconded by James. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Abstain.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
The next item is Resolution Number 2022-09-071R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning certified housing inspection, term of 2022 to 2023, for approval on behalf of the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Moved by Jayah, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Abstain.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Abstain.
That motion passes.
Next is on the regular agenda, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, ordinance number 2022-09-037, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 2 Omnibus, with a recommendation for approval on behalf of the Committee of the Whole.
Moved by Jayah. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. And just as a reminder, these two items were with the Capital Replacement and Improvement Fund for Streetlight Asset Management Plan, and pavement patching, and by two minutes service treatment. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Then finally, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd recommend Ordinance Number 2022-09-038, an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 5, building, fire, and flood safety codes. Do we have a recommendation for this?
I don't think so.
To get it on the floor, do I have to make a recommendation?
No.
For approval? So I'll make a motion to recommend it for approval then?
Yeah, go ahead and move to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Jayah, seconded by Chandra, and I will note, in response to council comments last week, the language in the ordinance has been changed to have a three-year term to the contract. Any further discussion? Grace.
I just had some clarifying questions. I don't know if we have people will take them today, or if Mr. Phillips would take them more. But just clarifying in the contract here, because I see where it says that this Bryser Company is responsible for, they put it under notices, reminders of upcoming inspections, notices of past due inspections, and notices of completed inspections. What I haven't seen, and I'm not sure if that's implied in here, is this company kind of reviewing and keeping tabs of the inspections. So I didn't know if there was any more details to share on that, just to understand better.
Do you want to come to the microphone? Chief Dade? Thank you.
Go ahead and repeat that for me, just to clarify exactly what you're asking.
Sure. I'm trying to figure out what I'm asking to. I'm trying to understand exactly what they're doing and kind of the benefits of this service. And my understanding from kind of what we were told last week is that they will help take in all these third-party inspections and kind of make sure that their paperwork is in order, and send out notices. And I see the notices piece. I just didn't see anything in here where it says that they, like, check the inspections. So I'm just wondering, is that a part of what they're doing, and does it say that in here?
No, that part comes from the department. So basically, what they do is they get all the companies in the city that are responsible for, like, people who have the smoke, sorry, the fire extinguishers. So if you're coming through and your business needs fire extinguishers updated, they make sure the company that is handing out the fire extinguishers, they check with them and make sure everything is okay on their end. So when they come through, they will, when we go do our inspections, before we even leave, we can look on the computer, and we will know that that company has already updated their, all of their extinguishers in the building, before we even leave. So it helps us in the sense it saves time. You get a lot more compliance, because when you have business owners, and they have to have their inspections, a lot of times, it's the last thing they're thinking about. But when the third party comes in, meaning they check, they're going to make sure that the companies that issue the fire extinguishers are the ones who are getting the business owners up to speed on that.
Okay, I'm still trying to understand a little bit about how that works. So do you guys go out in person and inspect afterwards, or just the third-party inspection happens, you take that record, and that counts as their annual inspection?
No, so we go out and do the physical inspection. We can go out before this happens or after it happens. The issue is compliance with having everything brought up to code and up to speed. So when we go out and do an inspection without Bryser, who goes, who comes through in the city, and I didn't explain that good, so anybody who has sprinkler systems in their building, if you have hood systems in your building, if you have smoke, I mean, I'm sorry, fire extinguishers in your building, the business owner is responsible for making sure all those systems are up to date. They have to call every company that governs each one of those aspects. What Bryser does is they come in, and as the third party, they take every company that's responsible for sprinkler, updating the sprinkler systems, the hood systems, all those systems, and they make the contacts, because they have to go through Bryser. No matter what company you want to call to go do it, Bryser, they have to go through Bryser. And then Bryser contacts the third party, the third party outside of the business, and says, hey, listen, this business, this business, this business has sprinklers in their building. So what they have to do is go, they will make sure they contact the businesses. And instead of us doing it and reminding them after the fact, because we've come in and then we say, hey, you don't have your sprinkler system up to date, Bryser will contact those companies, they will contact the businesses, and they will say, oh, okay, yeah, we have to have that sprinkler inspection done. And they set it up, and a lot of times, it happens before we even get there. And what happens is businesses usually feel very appreciative of that, because instead of being caught off guard, they've been reminded already. And Bryser doesn't remind the business owners, they remind all the companies that the business owners will have to go to. And so because of that, they track all of that information, and they put it on a platform that's accessible to us. And then what we can do is, as a company officer, before I go out and make those inspections, I can get on, and on the compliance engine platform, and see that, oh, before I even go to this business, they've already got, all those systems are already updated. And it helps with the inspection, and it feels more welcoming and inviting to the business owner, because they're not feeling like, oh, the fire department's coming to do this inspection, and I don't have it done. And as a business owner, a lot of times, those are the last things they're thinking about. They're thinking about running their business, but these are the things they have to keep compliant to keep their license. So it's a much appreciated service. It's just a third-party service saying, hey, you know, you got to get these things done before the fire department comes.
Thank you. And then the fee, the $34 a year annual fee, it was like per system, right? Is that from the owner, or that's from the third-party fire sprinkler people?
No, that's from Bryser itself, and they're not charging the business owners, they're charging the companies that are going to go service the business owners. And that's how they keep compliance, because in order, the reason why we have to pass that ordinance is because that's how we keep compliance, because they're going to make sure that they tell all these, tell all the businesses that they got to, that they've got to perform their maintenance. And that's just like upkeep for the platform.
Okay, thank you so much for addressing those. I think I don't, I still don't fully understand, but I think the important things to understand is that, if you can confirm this, that you're saying that this will help with your operational stuff in helping with the paperwork intake and the records and notices, and you think that it would not be a hindrance in people doing their inspections because of this additional fee, that it would help increase compliance more than anything? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the main things I need to understand, more than the details.
Yeah, it helps us, it helps, it helps all around. Helps all three entities. And if the separation is, like I said, the business owner, then all of the other companies that are going to support, who, and it's hard, because everybody doesn't have every system, like, everybody doesn't have a cooking hood system. But if you do, that system has to be maintained in order to get your, like, to keep your license. A lot of times, that gets overlooked as the business owners. The third-party company that's going to come in and service that is who the business owner would then call. What Bryser does is Bryser is charging all of those service companies this fee to operate, and that means that they're going to make sure they keep up with all the businesses. And when they're checking, instead of the fire department calling, saying, hey, you don't have your fire extinguishers updated, the fire extinguisher company calls, says, hey, you know, you got to have your fire extinguishers updated, and they go, okay, it makes sense coming from them. So they just, it just kind of reverses the process.
And then the third-party company makes, I mean, charges a fee for coming in and replacing those, right? Is that how that $34 is worth it to them, if people keep up on it every year?
Yeah, because they're still going to, I mean, if $34 is the cost of business for them, you understand what I'm saying? Like, it's not, they may even pass it on to the customer, but usually, whatever their service fees are, they're still going to get their service fee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, Chief, how does Bryser find out what all the businesses are in Urbana, and what all systems they have in those businesses, and who are the servicing businesses on those systems?
Just like anything else, there'll be an implementation process. So they'll come here, they'll get with us, we'll work through, we'll show them all of our records from past inspections and stuff like that. They find out what all the companies are. Anybody else who registers, it'll be part of the new process, thus having to pass the ordinance, because it'll be, it'll be part of the process to even get, to get for their business license. So every time that happens, it just, it gets registered right to the platform.
Okay, so the fire department already has all these records and all this information, it just needs to be given to Bryser when they come in?
Yeah, there'll be a data migration to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm calling the roll to what?
Ordinance number 2022-09-038, last item under the regular agenda.
Okay, all right. I thought we already did that, but that's okay. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. That concludes the business. We do not have reports of special committees, any reports of officers present. There is no new business. The last item on the agenda is a discussion of the fire station scoping follow-up. And we have Public Works Director Tim Cowan and Will Kolchowski, I believe, will join us as well. And Chief Dade will stay.
We're just back here.
Good evening, council. Uh, we're just back here. Uh, we, we did our presentation a couple weeks, three weeks ago now, I think now. Just trying to go over some of the details of the different programming that we were reviewing for fire stations. And we had uh reached out to you guys to see if there were any follow-up questions. And the, the first part of this is really just gonna be kind of addressing some of those follow-up questions that came out of uh all of you council members regarding some, some additional information about these stations. And then we'll have a little bit more discussion and try to kind of uh vet out a little bit more what we think the direction is going to be um for the programming and budget for these stations so that we can kinda get to the next step um with FGMA to get some, you know, some conceptual stuff figured out to bring back um for better detailed review. Um, so this is uh presentation really just providing answers to the miscellaneous questions you guys provided. Like I said, anything that hasn't been discussed in closed session. Um, so we're just gonna run through these questions and give you kind of the, the responses to the questions and then we'll kinda open it up for a council discussion.
Excuse me, I'll start out. Um, the first question that was posed was, uh, how many calls does the fire station at Philo currently answer per year? And how many were medical versus fire and what was the average response time from that station? Um, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, um you can see there was just under uh twenty-two-hundred calls uh at that station alone. Um, fifty-nine percent of those calls were EMS calls. It was just about thirteen-hundred calls. Um, and the average response time there is uh just over four and a half minutes. Um, if you guys have any other questions while I'm going through, just jump in. Um, on question number two, uh how many calls uh does the fire station from North Lincoln currently answer per year? And same thing, how many were medical versus fire and the average response time? Uh, that station averages about thirteen-hundred calls with five hundred and sixteen of those being EMS calls. And the average response time there was just over five minutes. Um, and just a, just as a little caveat there, um, the reason for the little bit of extended time there is there's a lot of gated communities for that response. And so you gotta stop, enter a code or wait to be let in sometimes there. So it adds to when we actually say we're on, on scene, so. Um, question number three um was, can you provide more clarification on vehicle needs, especially for non-fire-related calls, utilization of smaller vehicles instead of fire trucks and drive-through bays? Um, I assume that question's asking, can we do something else as far as responding to smaller vehicles? Um, basically, basically, we're limited uh by our current minimum requirements for the NFP and ISO. Um, and with that, we could move to some smaller vehicles. Um, but you have to understand that if we do that, it puts us in a situation where it would reduce the minimum manning for our engines and apparatus that we have to currently uh staff. In doing that, we would have to then, if we did respond in a smaller vehicle outside of the engine, we have to then get back to the station, gear up and respond again to another call because we can't respond in those smaller vehicles um for just medical purposes to, to a fire per se. So we would have to go back and switch vehicles so that wouldn't be very um efficient. Um, and as far as some of the smaller vehicles, there, there are, there's a, it's a whole bigger topic about different levels of service that we could provide um that is, doesn't really pertain to this. We could have that another time. But basically, the reason why we need drive-through bays and, and that kinda thing, if you can have it, is because the engines on the pumps, the, the, the engines for the pumps, the tanks, things like that, they're not making them smaller, they're making them bigger. And these things are industry standard, so um not that they don't have smaller vehicles for different applications, um but for what we need in our city, um we can't get smaller engines, so. And like I said, we can, we can go over some of those things later, too. Uh, question number four was, uh, what is the relationship with the private ambulance services? Um, who responds to calls and what services are provided? Um, basically, here, here in uh Urbana, we have two different ambulances that provide service here in town. Uh, one is Carl uh Arrow Ambulance, the other is AMTE's um Advanced Medical Transport. Um, with both of those, um they're both services that provide ALS service um and they're licensed um with Illinois Department of Health. So those are the two ambulance services that provide here. Uh, for Urbana, the Urbana Fire Department also responds to all ALS calls until those transport units can respond to the scene to help. Um, with that, there's no, there's no like contract that we have with either one of those ambulance services. Um, currently, one of the things I think we can talk about and divulge um is that we are, um, we put out, we're putting out a RFQ very shortly, I think tomorrow, um, to look at that kinda contracting that could help provide better service to our citizens. Um, but we don't currently have any contract, contractual relationship with either service. Yes, ma'am.
So Chief Dade, what we have now is the paramedic truck, right? Is there a paramedic truck?
Uh, no.
Fire department has? I mean.
No.
A truck that just says paramedics on it?
No, we haven't.
So every time it's a fire truck?
Every time it's a fire truck.
Huh.
And it's, I mean, that is, that is our mode of transportation. So um depending on the call, what we have is equipment on those trucks and we have advanced medics. So we've got uh EMTs, we've got EMTIs, we've got AEMTs, and we've got paramedics that are all on our staff. And then with the proper equipment on our trucks, we can provide ALS care. We just can't provide transport.
But you can't, yeah, you can't take us, you can't, yeah, you can't take folks to the, the hospital.
No.
We have to wait for an uh Carl or somebody, 'cause I think I recall when, when my mom had an ambulance, that they actually asked which hospital she went to and, and called accordingly.
Yeah, so every, every month, the, the ambulance services actually switch in town. So each month, and uh Neal Street is the separating line between uh us and Champaign. And so they, they take turns each month, who's gonna provide the service here. Um, the issue with that is there's usually just two ambulances that are provided for the entire city. Um, well, actually, for like both cities. And then if there's a transfer, meaning if they have to take one patient from a hospital to another hospital, that's a more lucrative call for them. So they take that, which leaves us one ambulance to respond in our response district. So what happens is us responding to those calls, we can get there in our four and a half minute or less response time, but then we have to, patients have to wait. Um, and sometimes that's an extended wait. It could be up to eight, nine minutes past when we've provided care to get transported. So we're looking to provide a better service to our citizens if we can. Yes, ma'am.
One on uh that line, too. So if the city were to contract with an ambulance service that was, you know, just for the city, could get there as quickly as the fire trucks, would that reduce calls on the fire department?
Uh, the answer is hopefully, um especially if they're um, you know, uh not getting into too many details with, with how that contract would look. Um, we would hope that it would reduce some of the calls that we would have to go on, so. Um, and there, it's, it goes on, it, like I said, everything kinda um snowballs or dominoes into something else. But uh these things are put into our dispatch system and coded a certain way. So we'd have to look at how we change those and, you know, for Alpha Bravo, Alpha Bravo, Charlie, Delta level calls, we'd have to look at what that means if we could get that kinda contract with them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, who pays for ambulance service? Who, who pays for ambulance service?
Uh, taxpayers. I mean, you independently pay for.
But it's the household that has the medical emergency, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Any other questions on that one? No? Okay. Um, number, question number five was, uh, what are the current public uses of fire stations? And what would be the benefits of, for more public spaces? Um, currently, right now, there's no um existing public space in our fire stations. Um, there's, the spaces just aren't really suitable for public uses that way. Um, if we looked at benefits of having uh more or, or having any public use spaces in our stations, it would just be um mainly an internal city benefit for more meeting spaces and stuff like that. Um, community ga- community engagement space would be good at making us more accessible to the public. Um, but it wouldn't really be a publicly accessible space with parking and all kinds of stuff. I, it'd be a, it, it'd be hard to pull that off, so. Um, and then other than that, you know, I don't, I don't see the benefits when we have other places in town that are already built for public use access. Um, I don't, I don't see how public use accessible spaces in our stations would be more beneficial than the places that are already built for that need. So.
I'm gonna jump in now. Um, so another question was, what is the plan for the old stations? Based on the condition assessments of the existing stations, we anticipate that they'd probably be demolished and uh have some basic site restoration performed, and then the sites would be marketed for private development. Um, either way, ultimately, the city intends to dispossess these properties in one way, shape, or form um once we are done with them. Uh, number seven, what is the cost of building decontamination stations at all of their Urbana's fire stations? So when we talk about decontamination, we talked with FGMA a little bit about this, and it really means providing adequate bay support spaces um so that people can actually decontaminate before getting into living quarters and things like that, including turnout gear areas, bay laundry, decontamination, toilets, et cetera. Uh, the, the city's other stations don't really have additional space to give at this time, so likely require an addition of a thousand to twelve-hundred square feet to provide these base support spaces to the existing buildings. Um, based on similar additions FGMA's worked on uh like this, it could be upwards of a million dollars per station to do that with two other stations that um we would be outfitting with something like that. And that, that's all kind of hypothetical because, you know, FGMA doesn't know exactly the site constraints of our existing stations either as to whether that's even feasible or not. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, um, but chief, we need a, we need decant- decontamination stations at all stations, right? I mean, this is eventual, we gotta do this.
That, that would, yes, that would be optimal. Right now, we do the best that we can with decontamination uh tactics and stuff like that. So when we come back, uh doing gross decon at the scene, hosing off, spraying down, but still kinda transporting some of it into the truck. Um, and then, you know, trying to get second sets of gear for all of our firefighters so that when we get back, you can go ahead and start the decontamination process by washing your gear and getting into your second set of clean gear. So we're, we're doing the things that we can without having the existing things in place. But yes, it would be, it would be very beneficial to, to be able to add that later to other stations.
Another question was, what is the estimated debt service breakdown for construction loans for the essential, enhanced, and amplified programs previously discussed? There's a number of unknown significant interest rate hike or rate risk primarily. So the final numbers, you know, will likely be different than what we're showing here, potentially higher. But assuming a ten-year term at a four percent rate, uh debt payments for the uh programs can be seen here, the essential, assuming we built two five-million-dollar stations, ten-million-dollar total, we'd be looking at uh a total, total interest paid on the ten million would be two-point-three million uh over the ten years uh based on those assumptions for the enhanced. Uh, twelve-point-four million to design and construct those would result in an interest payment of two-point-nine million on top of the, the original cost. Um, and for the amplified, if we were to build two nine-point-three-million-dollar stations, a total of eighteen-point-six million, we'd be looking at paying a little, a little four-point-three million in interest on that kind of debt service if it was all completely funded through debt service. Other alternatives are certainly being considered as well. What is the decision-making and input process for the station programming? So what we're looking for is some direction from council uh to kinda direct where this program budget should go based on some of the information we have so far. Uh, the direction doesn't have to be one exact program. You don't have to say, we want enhanced, we want essential, or we want amplified. It could be, you know, essential plus this component that was in enhance or possibly an amplified component and mis- and, and push those together to kinda form what we think we really need here. Um, and then uh based on that information, FGMA would take that and they would fine-tune rather than having these kind of uh soft uh essential, enhanced amplified programs, they would tighten that up a little bit. They would provide conceptual site layouts of what this would look like uh in, in the spaces we have. They would provide station diagrams and renderings to see what it would look and feel like in these locations. And they'd uh provide the refined budgets so that we had a, a more resolute budgetary number for that uh for what we're asking for. Uh, at the same time, the city's project management team and finance department would, would work on providing alternatives for how we would fund uh the program and budget that, that you guys think we should aim for. Um, and then, once we have those things, FGMA would assist with a community engagement effort displaying the council's desired programming information to identify final adjustments that the community or council members uh think need to be implemented before we go into final design from there. Um, so that's kind of the process that we'd be looking to get towards. If we can kind of start to kind of firm up the things that we think council supports, you know, out of these, these different things that we've put out there, um, we can, we can fine-tune that and then kind of put something together or check back in with, with you folks to say, does this look like what we're, everybody's talking about here? You know, is it too much? Is it too little? And then get kind of a final rendition to give FGMA, the go-ahead to kind of formulate some of these things that make it a little bit more resolute and digestible for public input at that point. Go ahead, James.
Yeah, if I, if I could have you, I had a question, but I need you to back up to slides one and two real quick. So um I was looking at the breakdown of EMS calls versus fire other calls here. And I, and I'll tell you, why, why I'm thinking about this is because I, I had in my head that, just through my simple logic, that we might want to be considering the extra bay on Philo Road because it's so far away from the core ambulance service in town. And I mean, that, that was just simple math in my head. But if I looked at this, can you go to number two again? It looks to me like Philo Road does have a whole lot of EMS calls.
Oh, yeah.
And so I was wondering if you could tell me, from your perspective, why, why the, the huge disparity on EMS calls from the Philo Station from the Lincoln Avenue Station?
Um, I think it just has to do with the uh distribution, the population, who's living there um in those calls, the call volume. So um as far as the people who are utilizing EMS service in that area.
It is, is um, is there a map that shows where the prime places that each of these stations cover?
Yeah, we can provide that later.
'Cause I was gonna say, it seems to me like, frankly, part of the place that this station covers is Carl, right? So I'm sure they're not having a lot of.
Uh, no. Are you talking the Philo Road?
No, no, the Lincoln Avenue Station. So there, I'm sure they're not, that square mi- mileage of space is not making a lot of EMS calls, right?
Yeah, it's, it, that one, that one's bordered right on the uh line with Champaign as well. So you've got us, Champaign, and um Carl's main ambulance quarters are, are based there, too.
And you also have OF, OSF.
Yeah, OSF.
That's close by.
Yeah.
Demond, could, is that something we could provide, like a heat map of?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious because I just, I just had it in my head that we might want space for an ambulance further out east and south because of where the ambulances are. But this kind of, kind of reinforces the idea that that station is heavily supporting EMS calls.
Yes.
And so that would rea- that would be data kinda backing up my simple assumption.
So one of the things to kinda remind you guys, too, is that this is kinda like a four-phase approach that we're using. And this, we're still in that first phase, which is just a scoping uh concept and scoping. So um getting, getting a budget from you helps us move into phase two where we start looking at concept and design, uh planning and design, and, and where we provide that kinda information to you guys, where we're saying, these are the things we're looking at. Um, without that, we can provide some heat maps and different things like that that show those things. And, and we'll, we'd be looking to do that in phase two when we move forward um so that we can decide where we're gonna go with these things. Yep.
I think knowing the utility of both um fire stations helps us decide um which fire station needs advanced or what are the, what are they called? You know, whatever the stages are. And so I think that having that map would, would help, so.
So are you saying you want those things before we move forward for now? 'Cause how, how it kinda works is it, I, I think we're probably both handcuffed as to what concepts and things we bring to you. It's, it's harder to show those things. Uh, we'd be able to, we, well, I guess we feel like we'd be able to give you a better rendering of those things once we had a, a decision on what you guys think for the, the budget and scope of this project.
So are we to give like a huge dollar figure for both of them? Like, could you go back to the chart? So like if we say, oh, you know, we want to. So, like, if we say, oh, you know, we want to spend, I don't know, twelve point four, but that doesn't mean both will be enhanced facilities. Maybe one will be essential and one will be enhanced. So, but in, to me, in order to make that decision, well. I don't know.
Is it possible to provide council with a form or a framework that they could work within? And, you know, here's, here's the basics, plus what add-ons do you want at what location? I, I think we need a framework within which to work so you get some consistent feedback.
Yeah, and I think as, as I ended my day today, I was thinking that exact same thing, as that would be helpful to everybody. What I, what I was thinking I could do is I could provide kind of a survey that just keeps it simple, kind of like yes, no questions, so that we can kind of see if we have a trend where counselors are, you know, generally all in support of, let's say, essential plus, you know, extra space to grow. You know, maybe that's where we, we fine tune that and then get to that point where we can say this. But then also ask some questions in there, is, does this need to be at both stations? Does it need to be at one specifically? So that, kind of do a survey thing, and my thought is, you know, probably a ten to fifteen question here to just to try to channel that in. Once we get that, then what we could do is kind of produce a draft to say, "From the survey results, this is where I think we're trending towards." And then, kind of bring that back to come and say, "Okay, I think this is where we're at. Do we have any final discussions before we tell FGMA to take the next steps to provide us some of these concepts?"
And along with that, attach the presentation that shows the three levels with all the various amenities at each level, so people are reminded what the choices are.
Yep, definitely. And I included them tonight, just in case we wanted to go through some of those.
There you go, okay.
Just a quick high level on, on that kind of subject is, you know, this, the essential is, you know, provide, you know, we're meeting all these essential design considerations here. We have the, the public space, which would be, you know, vestibule meeting room, city offices, privacy room for Wellness and Mothers Center, administration space, which would be a small three hundred square foot area for office and report writing, residential space, which would more or less be the day room, the living quarters, et cetera. And I think that included four bunk rooms in the essential, which is our current staffing levels. The apparatus bay, which would essentially house our current vehicles with adequate space to work around and decontamination base support space, I would say. And then, support storage space would just be additional storage space for, well, I guess that covers the decontamination and some of the workspaces and restrooms there. And that's the essential. And really, the next step up, I was trying to figure out how to block these out a little bit better for everybody. When we go to this one, then, the, really, the only additional things we're talking about here is increasing the training ru- or the, the training room, I guess I would call it, in the essential. That would be kind of suitable for departmental meetings, size twenty people or so, to go up to twenty-five plus people with really, really converting it to a public space where we would have restrooms and a vestibule and a lobby and some other things. And that's about six hundred and fifty square feet of that thousand public space. And then, there's about another three hundred and fifty square foot there that would be expanding city offices there, so we could, we could house additional employees there, city staff. Then, the other seven hundred, well, the other thousand feet is really, I, I, it's split out as living space and bay space, but it's all really related to the idea of us having two additional staff members at that location. So, two additional bunk rooms, and then expanding some of those support spaces to accommodate the additional staff that would come through the three shifts there. And then, the amplified, the, the, the big upticks is really enhancing the community space to house a lot more people, more public restrooms, more lobby space. To me, that really starts to look like a public space, rather than a city-owned space that's controlled. You know, additional administrative space would maybe add offices and small conference room to the essential. Additional living space would be, you know, for further growth and expansion of our staff from four to six to eight. The same with the additional apparatus and bay space. But I, I was kind of thinking through that, Mayor, because that was kind of, I was like, "I'm not sure how we're gonna get there exactly with this." So, I think that's maybe the, the thing I should do, is kind of develop a little survey that we can get more simple questions, you know, yes, no questions to these things, so that then we can get that back. And then, I could build a draft that I could send to council for you guys to review ahead of time and weigh in on it, you know, to say, "Okay, this is where we're, you know, either we're all good with this, or we have some small tweaks we want to discuss still." And I think probably from when we get to a point where we're ready to give FGMA direction, it's probably, in my mind, I think it's gonna take them a month to kind of pull together some of the concepts, get the renderings, get the revised budgets, get some site layouts and stuff done that would be ready for public presentation to do kind of a community engagement event, to just kind of let people weigh in a little bit more, you know? It's still, it's still a kind of a fluffy thing. It's hard to pinpoint this stuff. And, you know, we gotta take little chunks away at a time. So, I think if we can get the survey built, pull some more chunks in, then we can try to get to more fine-tuned discussion as letting FGMA go, and then getting community engagement, and then getting into design so they can actually start doing the real work, so.
Does that sound like a good process to you? Okay, Grace.
Thank you, thanks so much for getting back to us with the answers to these questions in particular. I just also wanted to say that our Sustainability Advisory Commission is also working on some sustainability recommendations for the fire station, which I think you guys know, but just for council members and the public, too. That next meeting's October fourth, so I think hopefully after that, they'll come to council with some sustainability recommendations. I think that's an important piece regardless of whatever design. I, I don't agree with amplified being like, "Oh, we'll add sustainability efforts in only the most deluxe expensive version." I think that, I, I don't agree with that whatsoever. I think that's kind of part of any basic building design. So, we can get more into that later on. But yeah, I'm definitely feeling I like the idea of telling us what's the bare minimum that's required, and then kind of à la carte options for what to add on to that. I think, for me, makes more sense, like, right now, like, I'm just not feeling the big amplified ones. I think as we've gotten into conversations about more of the complications about public spaces and kind of the more work and maintenance that goes into those, there's also things that go directly against some, like, lead sustainability principles of like reducing parking space size. And, you know, if you're not gonna use it all the time, to build fifty space parking lot is really not the best use of things. So, that's where I'm feeling right now. I don't know if you're at that point of asking that yet. I also have been thinking about population increases with the size, because there was, you know, questions of, are we gonna need to expand larger? And I think just looking at historically, in the past thirty years, Urbana's population has fluctuated within five thousand people. And right now, you know, we're back to pretty much where the population was thirty years ago. I know the last census lost some people in the count, but, you know, we, we don't, I think, have a historic trend enough to say we need to prepare for such a larger population. I think it will grow, but I think that also there's something to be said that it could be worth waiting until if that point happens. And with a larger population would be a larger revenue stream to kind of invest in this stuff versus going into debt, which has other, you know, cost of interest with something that we don't currently need and that we can't currently finance. So, I think there's definitely some things to consider there in favor of going smaller and then building larger, because if we're larger and we need to build out, then hopefully we would also have more money to do that at that time.
I was, I just wanna say, understand with the population as well. Our population fluctuates with the.
Political climate.
No, not, not necessarily political climate, but, um, um, hold on. I'm sorry, school registration and stuff like that. When we look at, when we look at the students that are coming in the games and, and concerts and all those things that come to our community, you know, we, we respond to all those things as well. So, it's, it's, I understand the tax base as well, to look, what we look at for the funding source. But for us, from an operational standpoint, we have to plan for all those things, too, when races come through and all those things, you know? The population grows for maybe, even if it's just a day, a week, or whatever. Those, those spikes may not bring in the revenue that we need, but we still have to provide coverage for those people, so.
Chris.
Tim, are you able to give us this PowerPoint? And, I mean, it sounded like you wanna tweak, tweak it a little bit. I mean, so I guess if you wanna do that first and then send it to us, that'd be great. The other question I had, Chief, is on the community rooms, are we gonna be able to, I know COVID has probably suspended the program, but do elementary and middle school fire safety education, would the community rooms be at all able to provide that space?
No.
No?
No. The, the schools probably barely provide the space when we're, when we're out in the schools for those classrooms, like, just moving, it's, it's just a logistical thing.
I mean, we used to do it at Lincoln Square. I mean, I remember that. So, probably do that, continue to do that.
Well, the, yeah, that whole, that whole climate has changed with, uh, with COVID. What the schools even want, that, you know, that service has even changed, how, how that looks and what they wanna do for that service. But public education is still a big, big part for us. But just like Grace was saying, you know, looking at the parking spaces and everything else that bring that public space, we, we, it wouldn't be utilized the way that we're thinking, you know, when we say public space.
I, I guess I would need a little more definition as to what the community rooms would be for, then.
I, I could, I could probably help alleviate a lot of this. We don't necessarily need the community rooms. This is a thing that, that got added in with some of the council goals, with you guys looking for more community space and different things like that. With this being a project for the first time in decades that Urbana's doing anything, is can we provide something like that? And, and the reason why it was placed in the enhanced is because it's not essential to our, to our function, functionality at all. But if we were gonna look to do it, we could look to provide ways, you know, to do it in this new building, how, and, and how we could incorporate it. But it's nothing that if, if, if we can all agree that community space is gonna be taken care of somewhere else, somewhere else, we can cut that right now.
I appreciate your candor.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I, I guess, I guess we're not gonna see eye to eye with this, because I do think that community space is kind of important in this, and it can be used for different things. It can be used to teach CPR. It can be used for parental, for classes with, with parent classes, parent. It can be used to introduce kids from the community to fire department. Okay, teaching them certain skills, start, starting to get, to get them, to, you know, to enhance, to get them in, invested in their community and maybe interested in fire department. So, there are different curricula or that can be used, that can be put to use in using that and advertising that kind of space. Now, I'm not saying there's gonna be twenty or thirty people there. What I am saying is that the space can be used for different neighborhood or community, especially neighborhood, though, area, uh, uh, meetings and so on and so forth, when we can't use a church. Oftentimes, where the Lincoln Fire Station is, even for the city, we use the Vineyard from time to time. That may actually be a, a, a plus for us if we have a space and not have to use the Vineyard, when we can use the fire station.
So, there's a, there's a difference, too, between our, like, our training facility that has space enough for twenty to thirty people so that we can train our entire staff, or have a meeting for our entire shift to show up and do training? Yes, it can be used that way, but to just call it a separate public space, to me, is a little bit misleading, maybe on your guys' part. We essentially, even in the essential model, we need that training space that could double for those type of things, but we wouldn't necessarily call that public space. It could be used, and that's why I said, we've got space that can make us more accessible to the public or that they could utilize, but to call it publicly accessible space would kind of be misleading because it would be in the station. You, you know, it wouldn't be a public place, it would, but you could use those spaces.
It could be additionally a public space, but it is mostly a training area for fire.
Exactly.
We're not looking to run an event center out of these stations.
No.
We all, I think, are agreed on that, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that to have a space like that would be helpful, and it, it wouldn't have to be in both stations. And as long as it doubles as something else that the fires, the fire people could use, I think that that would be helpful. And as I said, it doesn't have to be in both spaces, but I would like to see it in at least one of them.
I, I think we're all saying the same thing, and that's what I said, conceptually, it's hard for us to, you know, bring those things to you to, to show, and that, you know, we're, we're trying to get there, but I think we're all on the same page with that.
I was just gonna say one more thing on that, just from a space management stuff, or space management, you know, and some of the things Grace kind of hit on is, you know, building more that we're not gonna use is not necessarily a good thing. You know, we do have other alternatives like churches and Elys, and in the Park District has some facilities and stuff. And, you know, to me, if those spaces aren't used a hundred percent of the time, they're kind of not, you know, useful either. So, there is a, a value to kind of sharing some of those spaces, too. So, you know, I think, you know, building it within reason, especially being as it's, you know, a very finance, it's a big financial commitment, depending on how big or small we scale that thing. And I think like Demond said, you know, right now in the essential, it's, it's sized to house about twenty people so that they can train an entire shift in there. You know, it's not gonna have the public restrooms and some of these other things at that level, but it's not that the space couldn't be used in special considerations outside of that. It just wouldn't be kind of a publicly accessible space day to day.
Okay, so it sounds like you'll get a, a framework form that people can respond within and get some consistent, at least some consistent feedback, and we'll try to narrow this down. Yeah, go ahead.
So, one, one thing related to that space thing that I think came up before, because again, this isn't just where our firefighters work. This is where they live a lot of the time. So, if we can get any feedback from the folks who would be in those spaces in terms of that piece, because to me, it seems like it would be very disruptive to be trying to tack this on to a space that is highly functional, but also is supposed to be the place where people are going to decompress.
Yeah, and I would say that was a pretty common theme, is if, if there's going to be a public space, they want very sound separation because of those exact things.
The other thing I was gonna ask is, can, because you said you're gonna send us the, the PowerPoint. Okay, so, the other question I have is, as we go through this, can we mix and match?
Absolutely.
Yes.
See, I, I think the, the framework of the essential versus enhanced versus amplified is really to kind of give you some scale ability. It's, you know, this is kind of the minimum, this is a midpoint, but it could fall anywhere between these two, or it could fall somewhere between these two. And if you like a component out of the enhanced or the amplified with the essential, you can, you can pull those things together. So, I think part of the survey that I'm gonna kind of put together is trying to compartmentalize that a little bit more, so I can ask more direct questions to try to get this confined down to, you know, what do you support, what don't you support, so that we can fine tune this a little bit. And if we've got a majority that comes back and kind of all kind of align with this thing, maybe I can build a framework that's easier for you guys to say yea or nay to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we've given enough direction and feedback. Unless there's some other burning issue someone wants, oh, what?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna point out that mixing and matching comes with price, too, so. So, when you move those things around, some of that, some of that price is gonna move around, too.
And, and I'll try to, when I put the survey together, we've got some conceptual per-square-footage costs. I'll try to put a ballpark in there, just so you understand, this decision isn't, "Well, yeah, I like that, but I don't like it at that number." You know, I'll try to, I'll try to tag some of that, too, so that there's an idea. And the same stuff with, Grace had mentioned, our Sustainability Advisory Commission to kind of discuss this, and I've got that draft that Scott shared with you guys. And I just, I figured we'll wait until you guys kind of finalize that, to kind of bring that and kind of talk about those. But I'm hoping that I can kind of incorporate that into the same thing, too, so that we can get feedback on that at the same time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. And.
Mr. Evans, do you have a question?
I had a question, like, sometimes, you know, questions come to my mind in the middle of the night. So, my, my ask is simply, who should I direct? And, Tim, I don't wanna overload you. I know you've got a lot going on, so, Chief, could I send stuff to you and you could maybe forward it to where it needs to go, or?
Yeah, if you need to call after midnight, call Mr. Kachak. You know, but, yeah, you can forward that stuff to me.
Great, okay. With no further business before us, we are adjourned. Thank you.